Find your way to a seat, we'll get started. And I'll ask Councilperson Bellinger to open with a prayer.
Dear Lord, thank you for all the blessings you have given us. One more beautiful day, people who care very much about our city and each other. Thank you for our nation, our state, and this lovely town. We ask you to guide us, to reveal your heart for our city. Please help us listen to your wisdom with humility, and to have the courage to do your will in truth and love. Please remove all obstacles and bless the fruits of our labor tonight. We ask all of these things in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. I'll call this meeting to order, if you'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here tonight. We'll begin with open forum. Open forum is the public's opportunity to address the council on any matter related to the city that is not on tonight's agenda. Your comments are limited to three minutes, and in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council generally cannot discuss, consider, or take action on matters not listed on the agenda. We do have one signed up for open forum, and that's Matt Moore, Mr. Moore.
Well, Mayor, Council, this morning it was forty-eight degrees when I got up. That's pretty special. Got the tomatoes plants put in, and I just really amazed at what a beautiful spring day it was. We were just lucky to have that. I want to, first of all, I want to apologize for one thing, and that was for not coming down and speaking on the affordable elderly housing project in favor of that. I didn't realize there'd be so much opposition to, you know, the less fortunate older people, but apparently I was mistaken on that. I think my grandmother would have qualified for that. And I don't really think of hers as one person spoke up as a criminal problem. Another issue brought up was traffic. You know, I don't think she drove a lot, certainly less than most people. So I think it really came down to, we should wait until we did the comprehensive plan, and that we should do the planning for that tract as part of a comprehensive plan, like we should do also for the Park Street tract. I think that would be a good idea. So I apologize for that. And the other thing I wanted to do is provide you with some information I received from the city regarding the Park Street. I asked for two questions, and I forwarded you this information, and I heard back from a couple of y'all. But I just wanted to say it in a public. First of all, the city did not contact the planner and get any input for them, whether, you know, a person that's a professional land planner would have anything to say about, you know, a single-family subdivision. There was apparently no contact on that. And the other thing that was not done, which was provide any real data or collecting the information about the difference between building and the county, maybe the ETJ, that's not completely clear on that, and inside the city. So we don't really have any data to support that. I know that a couple of council members have said in so many words, it's self-evident that it's cheaper. But there's a lot more that goes into it than infrastructure, specifically like the cost of land. That's a big piece of it, as the real estate people know. So I would like, if we're going to move forward with that as a policy, that we actually have some kind of document that states, you know, what is different? You know, I mean, curbs and gutters, how much does that cost? Stormwater detention, how much does that cost? Because I know what we mainly subsidized on is extending water out to Central Heights, which was a huge boondoggle and just a multi-million dollar subsidy of development that's not in our city. And also, we extended, or it was extended, and we took it over a wastewater line from Spring Creek subdivision, I believe it's called, which is a couple of miles outside of the CTJ. So once you do that, once you provide septic lines, then you don't have to provide onsite septic. And once you don't have to provide onsite septic, then you can build small lots. So in effect, our actions have allowed rural subdivisions with urban standards by the actions of the city. And that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Okay, and I don't think there was anyone else. The city manager's mentioned there may be somebody, but... Oh, well, sure. Somebody specifically? So I'm sorry. But you're welcome when the agenda items come up. Thank you. Okay, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Consider these items, or is there anything to be removed?
Yes, Mr. Moore. I would like to speak with the chief on his agenda item.
And that is, Mr. Bolden, which one is? H, okay. So we will remove H, okay? Anything else?
Hmm, not for me.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of H? So move, Mr. Anderson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Fisher. Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Chief Seavey, I think Mr. Bolden had a question for you about H.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. On the, actually, it was not H.
Okay.
It was on the mutual aid agreement.
Yeah, there are several of those on there. Every time we have elections, and you get a new county judge, a new sheriff, whatever, we renew the mutual aid agreements with those counties that have changed leadership, just to keep them current. There's no change in the format or the content, just in the names.
I understand how the fire department's mutual aid agreement is between, actually, counties and cities, like I know we do with Lufkin and Angelina County. Now, when they respond to an emergency in Angelina County, Lufkin, if they've been there so many hours, then there is a fee, you know, for their time spent there, and also the equipment being used. Is that anyway, the police force, are they on the same type of process?
It can be. Usually, when we go to other cities to assist, we're there for a much, much shorter period of time. So it would be unusual for a fee to go back.
Okay, and that's whether it's the county or the city?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you, we appreciate you. So now I would take a motion to approve number five H.
So set.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bolden, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Fisher, okay.
Just wanted to let you all know that this is the first slug of what will be many of them coming through. We did update the form of the contract to bring it into compliance with current statutes. We changed the statutory references and all that. And there will be a whole series of them coming through. For example, the city of Lufkin is sitting on my desk for review at the moment.
Mutual aid agreements, okay.
Is that through Dedco, or is that through the cities themselves?
Mutual aid agreements are in between the two cities. So Dedco is not involved in this. Unless there's some, I don't have, Dedco doesn't have a police force, so the police department wouldn't be bringing them.
I know that they wrote up, I believe they wrote up the process for the fire department. Is Chief Kiplinger in here?
Chief Kiplinger is here, yes.
Yeah. Do Dedco get involved with your operation as far as?
Mutual aid.
Mutual aid?
Yes, sir, so Dedco does have a boilerplate mutual aid agreement that floats around the 12th county region for fire protection. We have not updated that in several years because of the language in that agreement unduly penalizes the two paid fire departments in that region, and really makes us beholden to go to Jasper, or Newton, or Livingston for free. So we're still negotiating that, and we've been working on it for a couple of years now.
So the two larger departments?
Lufkin and Nacogdoches are the only two career departments in our 12th county region, and so the only time Lufkin and Nacogdoches provide mutual aid back and forth, and we have our own agreement. There's also an in-county agreement with all of the fire departments in Nacogdoches County, and we work back and forth. But the Dedco agreement is not, we've just not been able to work out the language yet.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I've got a motion and a second on H, any more discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move into the regular agenda. A, a public hearing, discuss and consider.
They did the consent?
Vote on consent first.
Oh, got it.
Okay, thank you for keeping it straight. Discuss and consider approval of a historic overlay zoning application for the property located at 403 South Shawnee Street, HO number 2022-001, Community Services Director, Mr. Bray.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Brian Bray, your Community Services Director. The applicant, Cleo Jenkins, on behalf of the E.J. Campbell Alumni Association, which there are several representatives here this evening, although Cleo is remote, so he is watching, for 403 South Shawnee Street. He has requested that the E.J. Campbell Alumni, excuse me, E.J. Campbell High School be considered for historic overlay zoning. This building opened in 1903 and served as the African-American school for not only Nacogdoches but surrounding communities until 1970. Originally, it was named the Nacogdoches Colored School, and was renamed for long-term principal E.J. Campbell in 1937. And in 2014, it received a designation from the Texas Historical Commission as a recorded Texas Historic Landmark. Our city ordinance requires that at least one of six criteria be met in order for a property to be considered under historic overlay. It is highly unusual for a property to have two, much less four. So when the Historic Landmark Preservation Committee met on April 4th, they made a motion to unanimously approve the property be designated under criterias one, two, three, and six. The only properties that we have in town that would fall into that type of criteria are places like the old university building, the Stern-Huya House Museum and Library, so very well-established historic structures. Planning and zoning also met to hear this case on April 11th, and they unanimously recommended approval to you as well. So Mayor, I have a recommendation from Historic Landmark Preservation Committee and the Planning and Zoning Committee recommending approval for historic overlay zoning for 403 South Shawnee Street, also known as the E.J. Campbell High School. So Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions after.
I had one, I'd like to have a public comment, but I had one from the public earlier. Does it have to be adjacent to the existing historic district?
No, sir, it does not. So this would be an individual designation. You can have, and I don't know the exact number, but we have twenty-ish individually designated properties that are outside of historic districts.
Right, okay. Any public comment, any thoughts or questions, or? Nobody? Okay, all right. Council, any questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. I know this is quite, it's something we've been waiting for quite a while, and it's past due. But also, that school is historic in the fact that, I know that it was 1903 when it was called Nacogdoches Colored School. In 1937, it became E.J. Campbell High School. But in 1954, it became Emmeline Coptney, because they moved a high school across the street where the old administration building is now, which that should be also part of this request. And then back in 54, it went, well, when it was, Nacogdoches was integrated, it went back to E.J. Campbell. So it's historic in many ways, and it's been, it's overdue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, those comments. Okay.
I do want to make, I just think it's great. And I really appreciate all of the people who have made this happen. And I know it took a lot of work and a lot of thought, and it's really important for our city, and it's important for our comprehensive plan groups, the whole, the larger comprehensive plan, to look at the entire street and the neighborhood to make sure we're having appropriate designations, and we're saving what needs to be saved in this history. So thank you very much, Mr. Bray, and I know there are people sitting out here who made that happen, and we all appreciate your work.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve six B?
So move.
Ms. Bellinger, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, any further discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you, thanks to all of your work. We'll move to C, receive a mid-year Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation, Netco update. Oh, I'm sorry. What did I do? Okay, well, let's redo that, then. I got on the wrong one, I apologize. So do I have a motion to approve A?
We already did.
We just did that, yeah. Okay, B, consider zone change for PD Plan Development District to R1 Single Family for approximately thirty-two acres, being lots one, two, three, four, R, and five, and six R1 of the Timber Springs subdivision. This request has been submitted by Lone Star Breeder Farms, Inc., case file ZON 2022-02. City Planner.
Thank you, Elena Hilton, City Planner.
Mr. Mayor, just real quickly, I'm going to recuse myself from this issue due to a perceived conflict of interest, so I will step out.
We'll call you when we're finished.
Thank you.
All right. Again, as stated, this request is for thirty-two acres of undeveloped property located on the south side of Maroni Drive, just east of the Kenbrook subdivision. The property is currently zoned PD Plan Development District. The request is for R1 Single Family zoning designation. Staff does recommend approval of the request, and this item was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 11th, where they also recommended approval of the request. You'll notice on the exhibit that on the left side is the existing zoning. On the right side, that shows the proposed zoning that were approved. You'll notice there's an orange piece that's a remainder, that would still be zoned PD. That piece is actually owned separately. So this is an exhibit of the Timber Creek subdivision, which was done for the planned development district. The twelve acres that's not included was purchased by one of the adjacent homeowners to the south to be maintained and preserved in its natural state as a buffer from that development, which is why it wasn't included in this application. So I just wanted to clarify, because we did get a couple of questions as to why that piece wasn't included. It is owned separately. We did reach out to the property owner, and he stated that he has no plans for the property. He bought it to preserve it as a buffer, and he intends to do so. And so there wasn't a desire to submit a zone change application at this time. So I just wanted to provide some clarification to the council, because there were some questions about that. And this just illustrates kind of that common ownership. So again, this property is zoned PD Plan Development District. This PD was established back in 2005 for a mixed-use retirement community. It included single-family, multifamily, retail, rehabilitation. It was a kind of an aging-in-place community. For PDs, they are unique, and we don't get requests for PDs all the time, and very rarely do we get requests to change PDs back to a straight zone change. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background information on the process. So the unique thing about planned development districts is there is a timeline, whereas, you know, a R1 or R4, that zoning goes with the property in perpetuity. Planned developments do expire after so many years if they're not developed. So from the time of the initial zone change approval, concept plan, applicant has three years to submit a development plan before it expires. And then if they do submit a development plan within that time, and it gets approved, then they have four years to submit a final planned development site plan for construction. And then once that's approved, they have two years to build it. And if they don't build it, then it expires, and they have to go back to city council or P&amp;Z to essentially get reapproval of that plan. The last time this PD was amended was in 2012, so there hasn't been no activity for the past ten years. So essentially, it's an empty zoning. It's not entitled for anything right now, because either way, they would either have to amend the current PD, because it's expired, or go through a request for a different zone change designation, which is what they're doing today. So just to provide a little background information for the council. So the adjacent zoning is predominantly single-family. You have single-family to the north, east, and west, with the Kenbrook subdivision immediately to the east. To the south is tributary of Launa Creek, and then Colonial Hill, south of that. To the north is vacant, and then to the west is B2, general business. And that's predominantly vacant, too. You do have the Burke Center on the southeast corner, but that's a little bit far removed from the facility, but it's predominantly zoned and developed as single-family. The future land use designation for this property is single-family and rural. Rural is predominantly for places that have natural features, maybe have encumbrances for development, limited access to utilities, things of that nature. And so this request is in compliance with the future land use plan. The request is also in compliance with the goals and land use policies outlined in the comprehensive plan that promote growth inward by encouraging infill development where infrastructure already exists, and by providing for compatibility with existing uses and well-planned mix of uses to make sure that you reduce any negative impacts, and then you have community services that are in close proximity to residential neighborhoods, like schools, parks, and so on and so forth. These are just some images that we took of the property. The one on the upper-left hand, that's actually standing at Maroni, and then looking south onto the property. Again, the one next to it is just another picture, just showing your broader view. This is looking west, and so you're looking down Maroni Drive. And then the one on the lower right, that's the Burke Center. These are images looking east, and so the one on the lower right-hand corner, that's actually Kenbrook subdivision. And then to the north, the one on the left, that's just the vacant property to the north. As part of our notification process, we did send out eleven written notices to the property owners within two hundred feet. We also did the five-hundred-foot postcards, and then the zoning sign on the property. We received about eleven phone calls, just with general inquiries about the request, and then we received one written opposition letter. And when we contacted that property owner, essentially, they just expressed a desire for the property to stay the same. And then there were some concerns about some of the overgrowth on the property, and just cleaning it up, and so we did communicate that to the current property owner. And like I said, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this item at the regular meeting on April 11th. They recommended approval for the one. And the reason for the recommendation, the way that the vote went, was there was some discussion, some robust discussion about our comprehensive plan process, and if we should postpone this zone change until we get through with the comprehensive plan process to see if there were any recommendations for different land uses for the area, or if there were going to be any additional recommendations for neighborhood development standards or design, or so on and so forth. And the discussion essentially was that the comprehensive plan will review land use at a fifty-thousand-foot level, so it'll look at generally how areas should develop. It's not going to be a parcel-by-parcel analysis, and staff doesn't anticipate that this area will be changed to something different, other than single-family. Also, if there are development standards that come out of the comprehensive plan where we're looking at changes to our subdivision ordinance, or changes to our zoning ordinance, then those would still apply to the property. So those could be applied with future development, and the applicant has stated that there's no current plans for development for the property. Essentially, they're just trying to make it more marketable for a single-family, because it's, right now, it's approved for multifamily. And so with that, staff will conclude our presentation. The applicant Ed Poole is, or applicant representative Ed Poole is in attendance. If the council should have any questions, with that, I'll take any questions from the council.
Okay, I think we'll let public comment.
Okay.
Next, is okay. Does anyone want to speak to this item? Sure.
Hello, how are y'all tonight?
Great.
I'm Charmaine Dickout. And first off, I want to say, to the gentleman that is here, we not only, our neighborhood, and a lot of our neighbors are here tonight, we not only looked at that it was a low income, we looked at other variables about the property, who is buying it, what the city, you know, we were looking about the comprehensive rehab, rehab, re, the comprehensive plan, and several other things. It wasn't only because it was low income. There were several other instances that we went through as a neighborhood. We researched it, Kathleen worked with us. We checked everything out. And we were, the basic reason is, one, is that we know it's got, we knew it was going to be developed, but we just wanted to get, like, okay, the developers that came, there was problems with the developers. There was all sorts of instances, different stuff. We do not mind, and we at Kenbrook do want it to change. So that's it. I'm not going to speak.
Thank you. You're next, you're up.
Mayor, council members, I'm Ed Poole, Charlesville Real Estate, representing Lone Star Breeder Farm, which is the owner of the property. Just a point of clarification, it was, they were reminded, the owners were reminded during the multifamily discussion that this was PD zoning, which is an empty zoning right now. And so in an overwhelming response from the area and the neighbors, that their desire was for this to stay single-family R1 zoning, the application was made to convert this back to single-family from PD. There are no plans for a subdivision, as I'm sure you're aware. For this to be developed as a single-family neighborhood, the city would have to approve plans and all kinds of things that before houses could be built. All we're trying to do is merely designate this area to be future single-family zoning and development, and for future use, and whatever would happen there. But the owners just felt like that this would be a timely time to do this, to assure the owners of adjoining properties that this was the desire of the current owners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Colin Ortiz. I live on Carroll Street in Kenbrook. I want to say thanks to the seller, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and also the council for remembering our concerns from February, and for keeping Kenbrook in mind when making these decisions. Regardless of what the new comprehensive plan shows, our, the majority of our neighbors that I've heard from, feel like R1 is the ideal designation for that property. It keeps the aesthetic of the current community consistent with single-family homes there on the hill, has views that would be thoroughly enjoyed by new homeowners there, and hopefully Lone Star Breeder's will make a pile of money when they sell it. And on top of that, it's a win for the city, as it paves the way for much-needed middle-class housing. Netco has mentioned before about wanting to bring in some higher-paying jobs. And right now, we're kind of short on housing across the board. But middle-class housing is needed in the city, middle-to-upper-class housing. And as far as socioeconomic, or so, as far as higher-paying jobs and employees that'll come in to work those jobs, and so they're going to need some place to live, and we would really like for it to be there on that hill. In addition, I just, yes, that's it. I just wanted to say thanks for everybody considering our feelings on this, going back to February. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am. Excuse me, yes, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, city council members. I'm Alan Reed, and my wife and I have lived in the Kenbrook subdivision since February of 1981, a total of forty-one years. Our plans are to live here as long as possible, until the Lord calls us home. Our residence is just one street east of the proposed property, and we would like this property to be zoned R1 as single-family residences. And we have adopted Nacogdoches as our home. We plan to live here as long as the Lord allows us to. We do have a step farther about our property here in Nacogdoches. My wife and I both own cemetery plots in the cemetery here. But then again, that's only temporary, too. So we've taken a step farther. We have a home reserved already for us in heaven, and it is going to be zoned HM1. Heavenly mansion one, okay? So seriously, we appreciate the opportunity to say a few words about how much we love Nacogdoches. We love our community, we love where we live, and appreciate it being alone, and left alone, and to zone the other property you've been talking about as R1, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I watched you save someone at a funeral, but I didn't know you'd do it at a council meeting.
Don't press me.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
I hate to be a long position, but I'm going to. Mayor, this is, it was said earlier that, well, we'll just do the zoning and then we'll have to get on with the billing. This is the only political decision that would be made. Once you make a decision tonight, everything else will just be done through staff. So, what you decide tonight is what will happen. I request that you apply the same standards that you applied when you refused the recommendation for the affordable senior housing, that we wait till the comprehensive plan is done. At that point, when the comprehensive plan is done, then we can, you know, zone it, you know, R1 if that's what we want. I'd also like to mention what Elena said about the comprehensive plan is a 50,000-foot planning. For me, when I think of planning, I think about it as a five-foot, eight-foot planning. It's what we see when we walk around. It's what we experience. And if we think of comprehensive plan as this big, on the, on the high plan, we will never get to the implementation of the plan. Because only if we can get to what we see as we walk through the neighborhoods, as we experience our built environment, if only we can transfer the ideas that go into comprehensive plan into what gets built on the ground, then it's just a waste of time. It's a waste of $450,000, hundreds and hundreds of community man-hours. What, we have 40 people that are working on it? I mean, four of the council members are working on it. So, what's the hurry? Why don't we go through the comprehensive plan? Why don't we apply the same standards that you applied to that decision to this standard? And the main, the main recommendation I heard in there is why don't we wait for the comprehensive plan during the senior housing? So, I request that you apply that same standard to this decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Anyone else? Okay. So, with that, I'll close the public hearing. And then, as council for comments, Ms. Bellinger.
Well, I'm just stunned with the idea that we have to worry about zoning in heaven. I'm wrapping my brain around that, Dr. Reed. I, I think this is a zoning change that we need to approve for the, both the sellers and the neighbors and, you know, to get it straight right now, so. I'm still worried about that zoning in heaven though, Dr. Reed, sorry. Thank you.
Anything else? No, Mr. Bolden?
We're really not changing the zone because there's no zone right now. It's just a request to make this R1, correct?
Correct. The property is zoned PD, but because it's expired, it's not entitled for any type of development at all. And so, changing it to R1 actually entitles it for some, some sort of residential development. Yes, sir.
And I just have one little other things to say. And it's just ironic that back in February, there was no shortage of housing. Then and now, to this step, there's shortage of housing. And all of the other issues, the flooding in Kenbrook, the crime, the traffic, all of a sudden, it's going away. That's all my comment.
Ms. Fisher?
Am I allowed to ask, because the vote, the P&amp;Z vote was four to one?
Yes, ma'am.
Am I allowed to ask who voted against it?
It was Commissioner Foo.
Okay. And it was for the reasons that you, that you explained.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Was this property one of the subject properties for the low-income housing?
It was.
Which one was it for?
It was for the nonprofit organization that was recommending age-restricted senior housing on the property.
So, if the property were to get designated again, is what was the term?
PD.
No, 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 no.
R1?
No, sorry. What the state designated it as that kind of provided the impetus for the nonprofit and then the other developer to come in and do the low-income housing development proposals?
Yeah, so, this tract is still on that list that the state has provided as an opportunity for tax credit. And so, that changes from year to year. And so, maybe next year, depending on the analysis, depending on our growth pattern, it may change again. So, it may or may not be on the list next year, but a change in the zoning will still, it's not going to take it off the list for the house credit program, house tax credit program for this year.
Right. And so, if it remains, say the, it gets, the zone change or zone, zoning gets approved to R, for R1, and that same nonprofit comes and wants to buy that same tract of land, what would they need to do differently if it's an R1 versus if it stayed as nothing, which I'm trying to understand what that even means?
In their initial proposal, they were showing a multifamily product. It was a multi-level structure, like three, three to four structures. And so, it was, you know, a little bit more dense as far as units per acre. For a single family, they wouldn't be allowed to have a multi-unit structure. It would be, it would have to be subdivided into additional lots because we don't allow more than one single-family home per lot in that zoning district. So, they would have to submit a subdivision to create additional lots, extend streets, infrastructure. That had to get approved by our Planning and Zoning Commission to enable it for additional single-family lots.
Okay, and that wouldn't be required if it was expired plan development, which is what it seems like it is currently?
Yeah, because it's expired plan development, essentially, you can't do anything with it at all. You can't submit a building permit. You can't submit a final plat. The property is platted, but we wouldn't even allow someone to pull a building permit because the development site plan that was approved has expired. And so, that's that unique characteristic about plan development districts is if you don't build it, you lose it. And so, essentially, no one can build anything on it until a zone change process takes place.
Yeah.
Mayor, may I interject?
Sure.
I think what I'm hearing is, had that process gone through, or even if a future applicant goes through if, on this, on this parcel, they would have still had to have gone through the zoning change process.
Zone change process.
Yes, ma'am. So, it wouldn't have trumped any of that. It would have still required to go, go through whether it's a PD or R4 or whatever appropriate zoning for that development. It still would have had to have gone through a zoning change process. It was a two-pronged process. One was the actual application. And the second would have been the zoning.
Okay.
The only one that wouldn't have gone through the zoning process would have been the other parcel on B2, which I think is shown on your map there.
Right, right, right. So, and I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. No, 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 no. I didn't say it. So, regardless if, if, if that same nonprofit comes back in a year, just hypothetically, they would have to go through the same exact process regardless of whether this is an expired PD or an R1.
Yes.
That's what I'm hearing, okay. So, I'm not necessarily against the zone change. One, because of clear neighborhood desires. And two, because I know that we need more single-family housing, but we also need all kinds of housing in this community. I know that people don't like to hear this, but we also need multifamily housing. We also need low-income housing for seniors. And we also need low-income housing for families. This has been mentioned in the comments, but I still fail to understand why it was that council cited as a legitimate reason to vote down the low economic, or low income, sorry, senior housing development, the fact that we needed to wait for the comprehensive plan results for their findings and for the recommendations. But why that reason wasn't just as applicable to the decision for the city to subsidize a higher-income, single-family housing development to the tune of over $1.1 million and why it's not applicable here too. I don't understand. So, if any of my fellow council members could enlighten me with an explanation, I would really appreciate it and it might help my vote. And somebody is.
I'm happy. I'd like to, we keep talking about the only difference is low income, and that's not true. There's a huge difference between home ownership and single-family home ownership and rental property and apartments. Home ownerships for all, for all income levels is a path to wealth. It is something where, that helps neighborhoods. It, it's a huge issue for me because I've read the literature on this and I've studied it and I've devoted a lot of my life to trying to help and currently trying to help save homes that are in disrepair that people own. I believe in home ownership and that's one of my key issues. And there was no vote. There was not even a motion made. So, there was no voting it down. There was no voting it up. There was no motion. So, I wanted to clarify those two things.
Okay. We're having discussion, right? So, I mean, it failed for lack of emotion because it was clear that it wasn't going to go forward, right? So, I mean.
I mean, I think one thing is I look at this map. This change, going from what we've got on the left to what we've got on the right, I mean, it just, I mean, it just makes sense. And again, when the owner's asking for it and then the neighborhood also is in favor of it, to me, it just, it just makes sense.
I absolutely see those points, but regardless of that, waiting for the results of the comprehensive plan, I mean, that reason is just as applicable in both situations, right?
Other than no matter, I mean, if it's a different use, it's still going to have to have a zone change, whether it's R1 or PD.
Right. I mean, I guess, and since the, the discussion of home ownership, since Councilmember Bellinger brought up the, the discussion of home ownership and since we're talking about low-income people and home ownership, low-income people, first-time homebuyers, seniors on fixed incomes, on low fixed incomes, aren't going to be able to afford the single-family housing development that we just voted to subsidize, right? And so, that's kind of where my concern is coming from. I agree that home ownership is the gold standard. And I agree that that creates a path to, to wealth. I, I absolutely am on board with you on that. My concern comes with, I guess, concretely what the results end up being. And I know that we can't control that, right? It depends who owns, who buys a property, who decides to develop it and how they decide to develop it. But I guess just saying that home ownership is the gold standard doesn't meet the need for low-income, maybe first-time homebuyers who can't break into a market where the houses are starting price over $300,000.
There's a lot more involved in that and all the homes that are built and free up the other homes so that they're not as expensive. But we can talk about that. I think we're right now talking about this one particular zoning change and I support it.
Other thoughts? I mean, I, I think we all agree that we know we need low-income housing. We know we need a way to, to house those who can't afford this, this type of housing. We've just got some work to do. I, I don't know what the answer is. It's, it's very difficult. But again, I'm with Ms. Bellinger. I don't, I don't think that denying this one solves our, solves our problem.
Yeah. I agree with that.
Okay. Anyone else? Do I have a motion? Let me get it right this time for 6B.
I, I move to accept the zone change proposed under 6B.
Okay, do I have a second? Second. Those in favor signal saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right.
How does this vote, sorry, how does this vote break down?
We, we, we have a motion to approve and a second by me. And then, we had a vote of Ms. Bellinger, myself and the affirmative, Mr. Bolden against.
And if it's two to two, what happens?
I don't know.
If, if the vote fails, if the vote fails, then it's denied. It's just, a failed vote is the same as denial of the zone change request.
You require three votes for approval.
Are you going to call the vote again or are you just waiting for me to say?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't. I was waiting for you to say, let's just, let me just call the vote again, okay? Those in favor.
Can I ask? Is it possible to, I mean, I'm not ready to vote. Yes, sir, particularly since I'm the only one, since it depends on me whether it fails or doesn't.
Procedurally, you could ask to table the vote to a time certain. And then, your colleagues would have the opportunity to vote up or down whether they would consider a table.
Okay.
So, a time certain, a future, future meeting?
Next meeting.
What's the next meeting?
Table until May 3rd.
So, that's a motion, so you also have to have a second.
A second.
Now, you get to vote.
Okay. Without doing anything with the first motion that's.
The motion to table would supersede the first motion.
All right. Got a motion and a second to table until May the, May the 3rd. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Aye.
So, your motion doesn't pass.
Uh huh.
So, you're back to needing to vote. If you don't vote tonight, your vote is recorded as a no. Did I get that right? Now, if you're present, your vote is recorded as a yes.
Yeah, if you don't say anything, it's recorded as a yes.
So, you have to say something.
Okay.
So, I'll call the vote again of the previous motion made by Ms. Bellinger, seconded by me. Those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, we will move on to C. Receive a mid-year Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation update. Nedco Chair, Ms. Philpott.
We're going to start with Robert.
Okay, great.
Just give me a second, I'll see if I can find your, your colleague.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Hold it for just a second, we need to get Ms. Anderson back. Want to see how this works anyway. How does this whole thing work?
You just click it to the right and it's going to go to the next slide.
Oh, well, that's easy. If I mess that up, I'm in trouble. I appreciate that. I'll just start kind of pointing at it and something like that. All right. Well, I hope not because we're in trouble on my part, okay? Good evening. My name is Robert Flores. I am the chairperson for the Nacogdoches Economic Development Corporation. I'd like to begin by thanking Mayor Mize and the council members here to allow Nedco the opportunity to present this annual report to you. I want to be very clear that one of our goals is to help bring growth and prosperity to Nacogdoches, not just Nacogdoches, the city, but also the county. Our mission is conduct, develop an economic and industrial development association to promote, to assist, to stimulate and enhance economic development within Nacogdoches, the city of Nacogdoches and Nacogdoches County. We also would like to help create economic development and employment opportunities for the city of Nacogdoches and Nacogdoches County. And as I hear the conversations tonight, we all need to focus on employment in this community and how employment is so important to allow people the opportunity to build a home and to help develop and, and create wealth within themselves and help the community. Today, I'd like to just kind of go over a few things. I'll be helped today with Larissa Philpott Brown, who is the president and CEO of Nedco. She'll be presenting the second half of our program. But the first part of the report, I want to go through a few things about Nedco and the structure, not necessarily for the members here on the council, but also the community because some people may understand Nedco, but maybe they don't. So, I want to give a brief understanding of Nedco and how it was developed and the reasons behind it and some of the functioning aspects of it. And then, we'll move into the accomplishments this year and some of the challenges we may have as we move forward. Right now, the way Nedco's set up, it is a partnership between certain, not just the city, but certain public entities and private industry within Nacogdoches, the city of Nacogdoches and the county. The city's investment is currently about $133,000. $120,000 is from a membership that's paid to the organization and then a. And then about $13,000 comes from a kind, a like kind, or a donation for office space with, space within this facility, which seems to help. Also, the, uh, employees of Nedco are actually employees of the city. And there is a, a, an agreement that Nedco reimburses the city for not just the employment, but also the benefits for those employees, which allowed Nedco to have someone. It opened up the ability to hire someone that wanted to stay within the retirement systems of cities and so forth. That's why it was developed and put together. The additional support of Nedco comes from about $200,000. And that's from the county, from the Nacogdoches and the Department of School District, SFA, and then businesses within the community. And the business structure, as well as the county ISD and school, uh, uh, SFA, is based on a certain value, and each year it's re-decided at the Nedco board level and the membership level how that would occur. Nedco is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit. So if you look at the ratio of, of, uh, re, uh, revenue that's generated through Nedco, it's about a two to one. City is the one part, and the other partners within it are two parts. Uh, so I just want to be very clear on that, because from time to time, people will question, what is the relationship between Nedco and the city? Um, the, uh, I'd like to also point out a difference that Ne- Nacogdoches has with this edict and perhaps our partners down, or I say our partners, uh, the, the city down south of us, which is Lufkin. When you look at Nacogdoches, since we're a public-private partnership, our revenue generation for the fiscal year 2021 was $321,000. Uh, we do not own land or control any land, uh, which Lufkin does. Lufkin, because they're actually supported by a 4B sales tax percentage, which I'll explain that briefly. Uh, the state of Texas allows, uh, economic development corporations to be either established as a type A or a type B corporation. And they are able to capture some sales tax dollars for that designation. And A allows you to develop industries, and B allows you not only to develop industries, but also things like museums and, uh, 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 parks, sports facilities, things like that. In Lufkin, since they are able to capture up to 2% of the sales tax, they basically take 1.5% of the sales tax that's generated in the city of, of Lufkin, of which they give 0.125% to economic development. So as you can see on the slide, that last year where we were, uh, restricted, let me say that, to just $321,000, uh, they had well, well over $2.1 million in revenues to use for economic development. Uh, that's important when you look at our community. Our community is one of the few in Texas that actually has a private-type relationship. Most other, uh, communities have that either 4A or 4B type relationship. The reason we don't, and I've mentioned this in the past, is because we have a hospital district that takes 1% of our sales tax. And, and I, and I've mentioned before, and I'm not criticizing the hospital district. Hospital district needs that, because they have charity care. But we need to develop a way that the city can tap into more of that sales tax dollar, not just the city, but perhaps the county as well. And that's, that's a different conversation for a future day, but I think it's very important we look at that, because there's a lot of communities that don't have a, a county hospital district, and they're able to take care of the needs. And I'll mention that in a few moments, the importance of healthcare and economic development. For the time being, I just wanted to point out, that's why it's difficult for Nacogdoches to, to participate and give more to economic development. So back in the 90s, the community determined that we needed to come in as a private-public partnership to try to make that work. And so that's the reason behind it. And when you look at Lufkin, of that 2.1 million, about 1.4 million actually comes from sales tax. The other 700,000 comes from the properties they own that they're able to then go back and rent out and generate additional income. And we do not have that ability at this point in time. The other thing I wanted to point out to, tonight are going to be just certain accomplishments that we feel like are, are things that we're doing at Nedco that are important to the community, that's going to help as we continue to stimulate that growth and, growth and enhance it. You know, we're going to be looking at things like, or we do things like job fairs. And Larissa, in a few moments, will be going into more detail on that. Uh, obviously, she's been involved, and Nedco's been involved with the comprehensive and downtown master plans. We've dedicated some time and energy to that, to helping that area. Uh, broadband is very important for this community, uh, and it was, it was, um, uh, pointed out during this last, you know, cold snap, weather and so forth, where you had many individuals in COVID as well that had to work from home. And unless you live within the centralized city of Nacogdoches and certain just near surrounding areas, we were without broadband. And a lot of people that go to SFA, and a lot of teachers and so forth that live outside of the broadband network right now, were not able to perform their tasks or do their jobs. So it's important that we try to enhance that. Uh, we have a technology action plan that Larissa will go into in a little more detail. Residential development, we've, we've had discussions tonight about that, so I won't go into that in detail. Uh, but she also, and Nedco has also worked with business, uh, development. Airport, uh, as you recall, last year, Nedco took a, a larger role in the, I won't, I don't want to call it management, but working with the airport to help develop and bring industry into the airport. Obviously, uh, SFA worked with their aviation program to develop a program that, that we've had a good group of students this past year come through, and it's going to continue. And I think we all recognize here that that's a, that's a site, that we can have economic development. Because if you bring in aviation to the community, you're also going to have the opportunity to work on planes. You're going to have airframe, uh, or you're going to have power plant mechanics there and so forth. So there's great opportunities to enhance that area and bring additional, uh, members into the community and partners that could help enhance growth as well. Uh, the 380 agreements, uh, there'll be some discussion in a few moments on that from Larissa. Uh, the collaboration with SFA is very important. As you know, right now, SFA is, is, uh, just like many universities across the state, not just public, but also private, are struggling because of COVID and just that whole environment's changing. So Nedco is playing a role, or plays a role with SFA to coordinate, uh, what they're doing as well, to make sure that we're working on the same page. Uh, the I-69 advocacy, uh, she'll talk about that a little bit. Lufkin-Nacogdoches partnership is something else that we've started working on. And I know, uh, Mayor Mize and the city manager Mario has been involved. As business, uh, leaders in the community, we've recognized that there's certain energy that we can, we can, uh, capture if we work with our partners across the river. There's things that they are more aligned with. They have the assets necessary to bring in industry that we may not can tap into. But on the other hand, we have assets in this community that we can tap into that they can't. So if we form an alliance together and we go to Austin and we start promoting both these community, communities and make it look like a regional area, East Texas regional area, I think it'll benefit both communities. We can't, we can no longer fight. And, you know, as we mentioned before, that, that the communities, we've, we've kind of been raised to not get along. When you look at the competition we have on the sports field and how we just have a difficult time, well, those same individuals, when they grow up, they don't recognize that if they're in business, or they're just in normal relationships. So we have to bridge those gaps and say, we're in this together. So that's something that Nedco's doing to try to help promote that as well. And then also project development. Uh, one of the things that I, I just briefly want to point out, over the last three years, there's been a real, um, uh, growth of maturity, I would call it, with the different leaders here in the community from the school district, with the superintendent, with SFA, with the county, and the city. And we're working in areas right now that I haven't seen in many, many years. You know, it's been told before that for so many years, we kind of worked in silos, where each person did their own job. And, you know, you're responsible for the city aspect, the county had a different, and, and so forth. Well, Nedco, I hope, is able to bring those individuals together. We have a meeting once a month, actually more than that, but once a month, a general meeting, but also an executive, that we pull those individuals together, those leaders. And we talk about the things that we're doing in the community and what we need to do to enhance those different areas. So tonight, when I come to you, what I'm really asking for is not only to look at what we've accomplished at this point in time, but I'm also asking what can we do to enhance the revenue? And I'm not asking you to just reach into your budget with this, which is tight right now. And I know there's a lot of infrastructure needs that we have. But we need to start thinking outside of the box. We need to look at and say, how can we generate additional funds? Do we need to go to Austin? Do we need to talk to our group of legislators and say, what can we do in East Texas to, to help us? Because we're, we're restricted on sales tax revenue, obviously, property tax and so forth. But we have to think, you know, as I was listening today, just a few moments ago, about the, the, the low-income housing. That's very important. We have to be on the same page there. But we can't broadcast to people outside of our community that we can't work together. Because if you want someone to invest, and that investment has to come through this council, and they come to this council and say, wow, they can't get on the same page. I know we can. We just have to find a way to do it. So when we broadcast to others, they say, we want to invest in Nacogdoches because they have their act going. So that's my part of the, uh, report. I'd ask Larissa now to come up, go through a little more detail, and then I'm happy to stand here and answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm going to run through some of, some details on some of the things that Robert already mentioned. Um, just to give you some numbers and, and kind of end with what we're hoping to do in the next six months. So this is the last quarter of, um, 2021 and the first quarter of 2022. Um, we've held four job fairs. We fudged a little bit, September slightly outside of that window. Um, that had more than 40 individual employers and organizations and had approximately 325 job seekers at those. We don't have a great way of tracking how many folks are hired at each one of those. It just really is kind of impossible to track. But anecdotally, we heard from many, many employers after each one saying, yes, we hired people. Yes, we had a lot of interviews after that. Um, and I think it's a testament to say that the employers kept coming back. If they weren't making hires out of those job fairs, they wouldn't keep coming back to them. We did also, we're excited to announce, get a sponsor for our coming events. We have some already planned. Um, a big thank you to Mary Frances Bradford for always supervising these job fairs, getting the advertising out, um, working with all these employers and working with E-Tech, who is our new sponsor, who will be helping us do even more advertising. Um, on the job fair front, also, we were excited this year. We held one job fair, um, that was geared towards our Spanish-speaking residents. And we're able to advertise on the Spanish radio and, um, in La Lingua. And also had employers who were specifically looking for, um, multilingual employees. And I think that was a big benefit to the community. Robert mentioned the, um, Technology Action Plan. That was a big partnership done in coordination with the city, the county, SFA, and ISD, and LA Electric. Um, I believe you all got a copy of that, but just to remind you, um, the biggest piece of that plan was a really granular study showing where our broadband is in Nacogdoches County. Because the federal government and the FCC uses maps, um, to show where broadband is. And those maps are on a census tract level, which means there may be one home in a census tract that has broadband access. The other 2,000 homes in that tract could not have it, and the FCC map is going to show that that area is serviced. So we knew we needed a very granular study that shows where the access is. Um, some of the, the bit, major findings that I felt like were, were pretty important are shown there. Um, and I think the most important one to me is that, or the most important ones are that one in five homes do not subscribe to internet service. Now, they could have service through their cell phone, and that's what I'm guessing they probably do. Um, there may be some that just have no service at all, and, and they don't communicate with anybody other than on a landline when they get home from work every day. Um, also, I think something of note is how expensive our broadband is. It's, it's about $90 a month in Nacogdoches County. When you look at other rural areas across the country, they're paying about $72 a month. We are probably also a lower-income community than those other communities too. So not only are we paying more, but we're paying more, um, as a relative part of our income. So how do we use that? We have several new broadband service providers that are actually building out networks in our county right now, or they're engineering new networks in our county, and we're able to show them these maps. We're able to express some of these concerns that our residents showed to those broadband providers. So we're able to see almost an immediate return on the investment that everybody made in this. We've talked about residential development. Um, just to let you all know, we have received additional requests for assistance with residential development. They're infill requests. We have, we have probably, I think I've had three or four conversations with folks that are interested in new subdivisions. Um, one that was just interested in purchasing lots that haven't built out. So you see those lots on, you know, older subdivisions like Colonial Hills, where there's vacant lots, and, and areas around town where the subdivisions were maybe built in the 80s and that lot just never sold. Um, so we've got a lot of development in that area. And we're happy to be their, their landing point for those developers to be able to communicate city issues with them. On the business development front, this, this section is also very deeply led by Mary Frances Bradford. So in, in addition to our regular just business phone calls that, that happen over the regular day, um, she's made more than a 100 business development calls, scheduled calls, either in person or over the phone. And we, we call those business retention and development visits. And she's, those calls are to large businesses, small businesses, big taxpayers, new, new folks to town. Um, and she's, we're looking for trends. We're looking for needs. We are looking for what we call red flag issues, things that Nedco can help solve. Um, one example is a business in town that said, we have a big training need. And so Mary Frances worked with a professor at Stephen F. Austin, got him set up to actually provide that training, and then actually, um, helped them set up an internship, um, with an SFA intern to manage that training program. So that was a win both for SFA and for the business. We collaborate with the Chamber of Commerce to host business development seminars. Um, we had several months of, of COVID disruption, but you can see there, we had, we had lots of, of seminars. We have several more planned, um, that I'll tell you about in just one moment. Nedco did take a more active role with the airport. Airport manager Joe Seffalu is great. He does a great job managing that airport. Um, and we're happy to support him in a new era of growth and expansion at the airport. We worked a lot on kind of getting the airport advisory board prepared for that growth. We worked, as you remember, on a new, um, a new ground lease for all of the new hangars that we hopefully will have built out there soon. Um, and our next steps, we're really looking at seeking state and federal funding for airport infrastructure. So I know my job is to bring new businesses to the airport, but we've got to have some infrastructure upgrades out there first before we can really market it well. I know you're familiar with the 380 agreements that we've done, because we have, um, obviously, you were there with me doing, making sure those get, got done. Um, just so you remember what we do at those, um, the Nedco work on those includes processing the request, request. So they have to have a point of contact at the city to kind of bounce questions off of, analyzing the financial impact of the request. And under your most recently approved, um, 380 policy, the, um, we do have some Nedco members that help us analyze that request, and I'm very thankful for that. We have many, many years of financial knowledge analyzing those that helps me. And then also negotiating terms that are beneficial to both the city, but also beneficial to the applicant so that they are able to move forward with their project. We're tied very closely to the SFA campus and SFA faculty and staff. We do a lot with alumni engagement. Um, we are constantly on campus with different classes. We do a lot, um, with administration and development. We actually have a project that we are working on, um, a prospect that would work very closely with SFA that we hope we can bring to you in coming months. I-69 advocacy, I know everyone is very familiar with the South Street Project on the south side of town. Um, it is under construction. Um, I'm not claiming anything to do with that, um, with that project other than to say we are advocating for the construction to move to the north side of town. As soon as that project is done, we are hopeful that Texas DOT and the state and federal government will fund the US 59 to 59 interchange on the north side of town. Um, on your consent agenda today, you approved that appropriation request for Pete Sessions's office to, um, request some funding to maybe accelerate that project, and I appreciate you doing that. I am never in Austin that I don't bring up I-69, and I am never around a state elected official that I don't bring up I-69. It's that important to us. And we do advocate both on the state and the federal level. Just a couple of weeks ago, we participated with the Alliance for I-69's virtual visits. We used to have fly-ins to Washington DC, and now we save money and save time and just do them over Zoom, which is kind of nice. Um, but we were able to visit with nine US representatives and staff just a couple of weeks ago. We talked about that Lufkin-Nacogdoches partnership. In my 20 years with the city, I've never seen us be able to be partners in this way, and I appreciate that. And, and I appreciate the mayor's leadership and his friendship with the, with Mayor Hicks in Lufkin. We are working with the IC2 Institute, um, out of UT Austin. And they're kind of taking us on, hopefully as a project, as a regional economic development project. And, um, we hope to bring you more information on that soon. We also are currently supporting an economic development prospect for Angelina County. Um, they came to us and said, we are. Um, they came to us and said, we are interested in, in locating in Angelina County, but we think we will end up employing your residents. Do you mind helping us out? And we said, absolutely. We said, we're, we're here to support the region. Um, so we're excited that we're able to, to move back and forth across the river with those projects. We're currently managing five, at least five, um, projects and expansions. Some of them are local expansions, some of them are new prospects. It represents over seven hundred million dollars in new capital investment. Um, they are prospects. Please do not think that they are landed yet. Um, but we have to start somewhere, and we're excited that we're starting with seven hundred million dollars in potential new investment. Um, they represent more than three hundred new jobs. Just an idea of the things that they request when I say working with. They come to us and they say, we like your community, but where can we locate? We need rail, we need a gas line, we need a water line. Um, so I call Steve Bartlett, and we pull up the map we've pulled up five thousand times and look for the spot that doesn't exist. And then we look for the spot that meets maybe ninety percent of what they're asking for and try to figure out what it costs to make that site meet what they're requesting. Um, assistance navigating development. I'm, I'm always happy to do that. It's very, it's very easy, um, to support the city staff in, in developing these projects um, because they're so professional and they're so good at what they do. Helping find local contacts. Um, that's something we do every day. I always joke that I don't know the answers, but between Mary Frances and myself, we have the cellphone numbers of everybody in town that could help. Um, Nolan Smith, I think, is still in the crowd here today. He is our contact with Encore, and for example, is just helping me, um, last week with a, with a contact. Infrastructure extensions, that way, that's what you see from me the most often when I come and ask for you, for water line and sewer line extensions for these prospects. And then workforce training, once we have them on the ground, getting them connected with SFA and Angelina College to determine how can we get their workforce trained up and ready to go. I always like to put this number in here, um, just to tell you where we're at. I'm especially excited to show you this number this year because if you look at twenty twenty-one, we jumped up to about seven point five million dollar in sales tax collection. I realize that some of that jump, um, is inflation. Um, I'm hoping that we can work with possibly some professors at SFA to determine how much of that is inflation and what specific industries we're seeing that jump from. But I do not believe it is all inflation, so I do think there is a lot of positive growth there. A goal from about twenty fifteen, um, Nedco set a goal of getting our sales tax increase, um, at or above the state annual increase and then doubling our sales tax by twenty twenty-five. And you can see we're well on the way to that. We're about, at about sixty-six percent of our goal to doubling our sales tax, um, by twenty twenty-five. So we're doing, we're getting much closer to the state annual increase. We're catching up to the rest of the state, and we, we're pretty far behind a few years ago. So our major tasks moving forward, we will continue to utilize the Technology Action Plan to encourage broadband development. Some late breaking news that came in the last few days. Um, the TLL Temple Foundation has connected, um, Nedco with the Center on Rural Innovation, which is a, um, nonprofit focused on developing a digital entrepreneurial ecosystem. And, um, the tip, they don't, they've done work all across the United States and they've never worked in Texas. And the Temple Foundation actually approached them and said, I have a great city for you. I have a great organization for you and Nedco that I think could help. And so we're moving down that road, and I'm hoping that we'll, we'll get a lot out of that partnership. We are excited about workforce development. The, um, NISD New CTE Center had their ribbon cutting a few days ago, and it is absolutely beautiful facility. Um, we are hopeful that we can continue to chip away at the adult workforce development piece. I know that's the big piece laying out there, and we have a lot of plans for that, but hope, know that we will be working on that in the coming months. Um, as staff receives our qualified, workable residential infill requests, we'll analyze those and share them with you. I've had several people approach me, but I haven't had any formal requests yet. So just know that they'll probably come and come. Um, as you requested, we will work on an infill development policy. Something that, um, Mr. Canizares and myself have talked about is a first-time homebuyer policy and program as well for the city to administer, so that's something else we will be working on. All in conjunction with a comprehensive plan, of course. There's a housing need study that will come out of that, and so we don't wanna get too far ahead of that, but work as we get the data in. Entrepreneurship, we'll start in, in-person classes again. This year, we will be running both the Spanish language and our traditional classes at the same time um, because we realize that they're not the same resources. We have different teachers for both classes, so we're gonna run them at the same time. We also have about nine additional business seminars planned all the way through November, ending with a small business roundtable, hopefully, um, to be led at the chamber to determine the topics our business owners need and want to hear. We never stop working on project facilitation. Um, every day, we work with, with new businesses that, that just call and say, I wanna open a new business in Nacogdoches. How do I do that? As I said, we have a lot of opportunity at the airport, not only through government funding, but through, um, expansion of the SFA Flight School, and we will continue to work on that. And then also continue to, um, seek ways to alternatively fund the things that we need to do with economic development. It's, it's important that we continue to look for ways to do things other than the programmatic things that we do. We look for ways to possibly land bank and things like that so that we can move more efficiently in the way that we do things. Be happy to answer any questions. And I also, I failed to mention, we do have several members of Nedco here tonight, um, several exec committee members and officers, and I appreciate them coming. And feel free to ask them questions too.
Any, uh, other comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Okay. Uh, Mr. Anderson, any, any comments?
Um, no particular questions, but, uh, I, I appreciate the presentation, and, uh, I think there is a, uh, there's a general misperception about what all Nedco covers. Um, and a lot of people are not, um, aware of just how much you and Mary Frances and your staff and the whole board do to help business development in this community and how really, really important it is, I think. Um, so thank you very much for what you do, and thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
Um, I second what Councilmember Anderson said, and I had just a follow-up question about the, um, well, first of all, I also wanted to comment that I appreciate, um, uh, your efforts to reach into the Hispanic community and to foster, um, um, people who wanna be business owners and, and existing business owners and providing those classes for people. I think that for a long time, um, our community has been sort of trying to figure out how to bring that community into the fold, and I think that that's a huge step and goes a long way, um, in building trust, um, with that community. So thank you.
Thank you for your participation in that. Um, and a question about the, the adult workforce development. The, um, the Training Center at NISD is just for? Just for high school. It, it could technically be used for adult education after hours. Um, but during any time when there are children on the campus, it is very difficult to get anybody other than K- twelve folks on that campus. So really, to truly address adult workforce in the way that we need, um, we need a separate facility for that. Okay. Um, and, I mean, I, I think that's one of the, when I was running, that's one of the first things that we talked about when, when, when we met. Um, and so it's been an issue, and it was an issue for a long time before that. Um, I think I heard you say that we're gonna be hearing more about that in the coming. Yes, yes, yes. Um, I, it essentially comes down to a facility. We need a facility, um, and I think we have, um, a lot of, this is an annoying word, but we have a lot of synergy with, with, um, our big public institutions in town between NISD and SFA and the city and the county. Um, and I have some ideas on how we can hopefully work towards a facility. Um, I believe that Angelina College and SFA and also, um, Texas State Technical College could all be providers of that training. They just need a building to do it in. I look forward to hearing about that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, thank you for the report. It's a lot of potential out there, so thank you. Um, we, the flight training, I think that's the greatest thing that ever happened to Nacogdoches and, and the SFA. Aircraft technicians, are we having, uh, say, maybe, uh, training set up for maybe repairing aircraft? I mean, that's, that's good wages.
Absolutely. I think, um, if you remember back to when we negotiated the, um, three-eighty agreement with HCH and they talked about their future phases, I believe that is on their, their radar to do soon. Um, it, of course, needs additional infrastructure and additional buildings and things like that. And so we're letting them kind of, kind of get their legs under, under them and, and build their enrollment with the Flight School, and then hopefully that would be phase two.
We wanna keep the excitement going.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Uh, you, you mentioned about hiring. And the question is, when the seminar was held with the employers and determined if, uh, there was, you know, they received employees and that, would the unemployment rate tell you if there was a sort of major shift?
Um, if there was a major shift, yes, that we would see that. Um, unfortunately, I think we're probably talking about hiring maybe twenty, thirty, forty people at a time. And so when you've got, you know, twelve thousand people in the workforce, that many folks could quit in the same month. So unfortunately, I don't think we could see that. We can certainly try to do a better job of, of maybe surveying those employers after. Um, unfortunately, there's just no way of, of forcing them to tell us who they hired and if they've stayed.
Um, you mentioned broadband, and did you mention building out, or did you just say in the engineering stage?
I know they are engineering, they are supposed to be starting build out any day now. Steve Bartlett, do you know, are they actually burrowing underground and building?
They are.
They are, yes. So they are actually here and building.
So I guess my next question is, who decided which area is going to be built out first?
So that is, these are all private telecommunications companies. So they truly, just being blunt, they work off of a business model. And so they work where they probably get the highest return, which is gonna be commercial areas and then higher density residential areas. Um, they, they have a, a funding model that shows how many houses and how many connections per line they need to get to make money on, on installing that line. So you'll probably see them along, um, North Street, University Drive. Some of it had to do with where the fiber actually comes into Nacogdoches. Makes sense that they start from that point. And Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't they start on the northwest side of town, I think?
And along the main corridors, North Street, University Drive.
Yeah, you see, you're seeing a lot of cable. I mean, fiber being dropped, I mean, all down fifty-nine.
Yep, yep. And, and one bonus of that is we still have our existing AT&T and Sutton Link Line. So these are new providers, so you'll have a choice in the future.
Thank you for your report.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Ms. Ballinger?
Um, well, I, I, I think there are a lot of things exciting, and I'm really excited about the work with the Center for Rural Innovation. I think that's great. Um, they will help with, with, um, um, new startup companies, and I think it's just a wonderful thing. Um, um, I've appreciated, um, all your work. Not only the work for bringing people in, but also supporting our local businesses and trying to keep them afloat. I did have one question or one clarification, and I would like maybe for us to consider this um, in a future, for, for maybe a little more research and to hear back. But we do not have a public hospital anymore. We have two private hospitals, and that's of grave concern to me, um, particularly since we borrowed money and did quite a bit of, of, um, expansion and facility renovation, and we are still paying. That one percent is going toward that bond, uh, to pay back. And now we do not have charity care any more than if, than any normal, uh, private hospital has. So if maybe we could have a report on how that works and, um, it, that's one of the reasons that you see me asking about every single dollar because we don't wanna get ahead of ourselves and, and build and be in debt that we can't pay.
Sure.
So. And that's something to think about as we look at capital improvements.
Absolutely.
But, but I would like a report back be, about exactly where we are. We kinda skirt around it. It's kind of the elephant in the room. I'd like us to tackle it sometime.
And the, the Nedco officers and the Nedco, um, exec committee and the board have followed that very, very closely, that entire transaction. Um, it is a very complex transaction, and so I will probably rely on some of, of, um, the Nedco officers to maybe assist me with that explanation. But it, I'd be happy to provide a report to you that, that explains it. And, and we also have, um, you know, your friends and neighbors are on the hospital board that, that were part of that transaction as well, so.
Maybe even the CEO from the hospital.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Explain what's the difference now. What is our, um, I remember when we transported women in labor down to Galveston, um, and, uh, in labor. I mean, it's, it's, this is a difficult pill to swallow here.
Um, I, I, I do wanna add that, um, as of just last, this week or last week, um, the new owners of Memorial Hospital did join Nedco, and they are excited to partner with Nedco on, um, working together as a community with Medical Center and, and the hospital district, um, on any healthcare initiatives that we have. We just got them, got them to the table, so we don't quite have a plan of action with them yet, but we're excited to work with them closer as partners.
Well, these are our tax, city type, tax dollars going towards us, so, thanks.
Ms. Ballinger, I would, I would tell you that, that Robert Flores has really studied that issue and, and been very involved in the hospital district in the meetings, and he would be a great one to kind of pick his brain and, and, and get some information. He is, he, he's done a lot of work on that, and, and I appreciate you, uh, Robert, for doing that. And, uh, certainly, your leadership in, in Nedco and Larissa for all you do. Thank you.
Um, I, I would second the request to have a report during a city council meeting or work session or something that was opposed to like us one-off asking Mr. Flores questions.
Absolutely. I will, um, I'll work with, with Mario to get that scheduled, and we will, um, see if we can, um, talk to the folks at Memorial Hospital and have them involved and engaged just as an introduction to the council.
Thank you. Any, anybody else? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move to D. Uh, consider approval of a contract buying between the city and Nacogdoches and Drury Construction Company, Inc., for the twenty twenty-two street paving project number one in a not-to-exceed amount of nine hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred eighty-three dollars, Assistant Director of Public Works. Yes, sir.
Mayor, City Council, Case Offerman, Assistant Director of Public Works. Uh, asking you tonight to consider approval of a, a contract, uh, between the city and Drury Construction, uh, for the twenty twenty-two street paving project number one. On April seventh, we received bids on this project. Uh, it included a base bid as well as two additive alternate bids. We had three contractors, uh, who submitted bids, as you see there on your, uh, on your sheet. Uh, just as a point of note, the low bidder, uh, CCC Black Topping, uh, actually, uh, withdrew their bid because they're, they had an issue with one of the numbers they submitted, and, uh, they could not honor that price, so they withdrew their bid. Uh, Drury Construction was the second low bid, uh, for all three, uh, the base bid and two additive alternates. And they, uh, they are a local bidder that we've used many times. Uh, we, uh, greatly respect our relationship with them. They always do a great job. Uh, most recently, they did the section of MLK in front of Pilgrims, which was the highlight of everybody's year. And so, uh, we are excited to work with them again. Uh, the two additive alternate bids, the first one is, uh, curb and gutter replacement as well as concrete valley gutters on, on some of these streets, uh, just to help and improve some of the drainage. And then the second includes chemical stabilization on three of our streets, which, um, after testing and, and talking to our geotechnical engineer, uh, we really feel is a necessity on these three streets. So we recommend all of these, uh, bids for approval in the total amount of nine hundred eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars to Drury Construction. I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Toppin. Is, is there any public comment? Okay. Counsel? Mr. Bolden?
No.
Ms. Ballinger? Ms. Fisher? Ms. Anderson?
No, no questions.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion on D? Uh, six D?
Motion to approve six D.
Mr. Bolden? All right, I'll second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Anderson? Any discussion? Those in favor sitting up saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. Moving to E. Consider approval of the purchase and installation of playground equipment from Game Time for the Richie Street Playground in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Community Service Director, Mr. Ray. Community Services Director, Mr. Ray.
Good evening again, Mayor, Council, Brian Bray, your Community Services Director. Um, this is the request to purchase a playground to replace the one that we currently have at Richie Street Park in the amount of two hundred and forty, three hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. If this is awarded this evening, this will only be the second national demonstration site in East Texas. Unfortunately, a little town of Carthage beat us to it. Um, but nonetheless, we will, we will, we will be the second. And the first, all abilities or all-inclusive playground in Nacogdoches. And there's a big difference between the playgrounds that you have so graciously funded over the last several years for places like Pecan, Festival Park, Pioneer Park. Um, those are wonderful playgrounds, but they're not all-inclusive or all-abilities type units. And, and the biggest difference is this all-inclusive provides experiences for people of all ages and all abilities to interact and play together. So that's the main difference between the two. Um, when, when staff sat down to, uh, scope this project in December of twenty twenty, uh, we met with Mark Macy, who's here, he's the, the designer and representative from Game Time. Um, we sat down and scoped a project that came to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, we, that was budgeted and then we took that feed, or took that design and met with members of the Mayor's Council for People with Disabilities and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and they provided some additional feedback. They, they requested a few items to be removed, they requested a few other items to be included, things that staff simply didn't recognize in that first scoping project. That increased the cost, um, by additional eighty thousand dollars. So then, a- and, and I failed to mention that original hundred and eighty thousand, if that same unit was built today simply because of product pricing increases, inflation would be two hundred and twenty-six. So this entire, um, increase is not simply due to redesign. A, a big portion of that is because of inflation and product pricing increases. So then after that, uh, feedback from those two groups, um, Mr. Macy and I sat down and we did some value engineering. Our goal was to make sure that all of the items that were requested by both of those groups stayed intact. But where could we save some, some money? Um, one of the biggest savings was, uh, we had designed the border to be aesthetically pleasing. And so if there was a fall zone that only needed eight feet, but we had it curved because it looked a little bit better at ten, well, we decreased that back to eight. So the, the unit itself still looks wonderful, but we were saving some of the border material and some of that, um, poured-in-place surfacing. You can see the other items that we removed. Um, we went from four bays to three bays, we removed a small shade and did a few other things. And, and the reason I mentioned that poured-in-place was a big cost is the poured-in-place material is, if you've been to a playground, that it's firm but kind of spongy, you know, it's not the wood fiber mulch. That's what we're talking about is it's a concrete base within a soft material place on the top. And that part alone is forty-two thousand dollars of this total project. And the other big expense is sixty-one thousand and that's for the labor to install from Game Time to install the unit. Um, just in case some of you haven't been over to Richie Street, Rich, recently, this is what we currently have sitting there. And this is a mock-up of the proposed design. Um, Game Time did not have the time to go back and remove that, that fourth bay on there. So, um, that is just almost exactly what we are bringing for you, uh, for consideration this evening. Um, but Mayor, I'd be happy to answer any questions after public comment. And Mr. Macy is also here, should you have any questions of Game Time.
Okay, great. Is there public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Um, my name is Michelle Cox and I'm the President of the Parks Advocacy League. Um, we formed in twenty fourteen in response to an overwhelming need to update the parks. And so, um, our initial goal was to get a splash pad and we finally did in twenty nineteen. Um, but we also worked on Temple Spray Park as our first park in twenty seventeen. And because of this kind of ground swell of interest and advocacy for the parks, then we've seen wonderful generosity from the city updating several other parks. And so it just is so fitting to have another park get a total makeover that it needs. And, um, and so I ask you to be considerate of that, that, that every neighborhood that is addressed and has shown care and concern, then those children grow up knowing that they matter. And, um, something that I've heard o- over and over as I've worked with people throughout the community, um, is we'll hear comments of, well, our neighborhood never gets cared for. Our neighborhood is forgotten, our neighborhood never gets, um, the treatment that the other neighborhoods do, like Maroni Park and, um, Pecan Park. And those, of course, are bigger community parks, so it's different from a neighborhood park. Um, but just keeping that a principle of concern that is just generously spread all the way around the city, that, that says a lot. And especially with this being, um, an all-inclusive playground, that's really special because it will provide, um, the ability to play and interact. And when I've talked to parents with disabled children or parents who are disabled, that they are so limited with a lot of our parks. Even though I love them, I think they're fantastic and I take my kids out and let them go be feral for a while. It's wonderful. I have six kids myself. Um, so we need these parks and it's a wonderful outlet. And so I look forward to seeing families having this facility, um, that can accommodate their special needs that they might have. Um, so, and I've, you know, been talking to a lot of families over the years that have been really waiting for something like this. So this is really gonna be a huge asset to our community. Um, and I think that it will help to make this particular neighborhood feel like it's part of the city and not so isolated because more people will come and it'll become another way to interact and kind of break down the barriers that we have inherited. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for what the Parks Group does. We appreciate you. Any other public comment?
Thank you. I'm here and my name is Ann Keenan. Um, and I'm so happy to see this. I just wanted to. My name is Ann Keenan. Um, I just wanted to say something on behalf of the Disabled Committee of, Community of Nacogdoches and the Mayor's Committee for People with Disabilities, how much this is appreciated. There's an idea called the, I think it's the curb cut concept that people, you'd never see anyone in a wheelchair, so why do you need to bother to put in the curb cuts? Well, the reason you don't see them is because they're not there. And just because you don't think there's people that might need something, just the fact that it's there opens it up for everybody of every need to know that we're all included. And it's super important, so thank you so much. And thank you guys with Parks League very much.
Thank you, Ann. Any other public comment? Okay, council, Ms. Bellinger?
I just have one question. Um, is the drainage, are those materials, does the water? I know there are new materials that have, that allow drainage and I know you're, I see you back.
I thought the answer was yes, but I wanted to verify before I said yes. Yes, ma'am, it does.
You know, we're, we're big on drainage here in, in Nacogdoches, so, thanks.
Anything else?
No, no, thanks.
Mr. Bolden?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanna thank PAL because they have done a great job citywide with all of the parks. And, uh, uh, I really appreciate, uh, Temple. They've done a great job out there putting shades and everything else. But one of the complaints that I, I've gotten, uh, at the Richie Road area, you know, we call it Burge Hill, uh, is that the park was outdated. And they was having to go to other parks. Sometime they get a ride to go and otherwise they just play on the old outdated. And they, and there's a lot of children within walking distance of that facility. So, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Fisher?
Um, I just, I appreciate, um, everything that, um, that PAL does in terms of the focus on, on inclusivity across ability levels and, and socioeconomic levels. I think that's, that's super important and the reason that parks exist. Um, and I also very much appreciate the cities being open and reaching out to PAL and to the Mayor's Committee and, and taking, um, their input, even though it, it drove the price up, um, because that shows that the city values in- inclusivity. And, um, and, and I really appreciate that. I think this is great.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Uh, um, you know, I, to, to sort of, uh, dovetail with what Mr. Bolden and Ms. Fisher said, I, you know, that, that park in particular, um, was, uh, as you well know, sorely in need of updating, um, as, as were others before they were updated. Um, so I'm, I'm very excited that, uh, that that park is finally receiving some renewed attention. Um, and, uh, I really appreciate, uh, your efforts and PAL's efforts and the collaboration there. I think that, that, uh, partnership has, has, uh, um, borne some pretty good fruit for the community. So I, I'm very happy about it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, do I have a motion on six E?
I'll move to accept it.
Move, Ms. Bellinger, have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Fisher? Any further discussion? Those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, F, consider the adoption of a budget amendment in the amount of sixty thousand five hundred for the purchase and installation of playground equipment for Richie Street Park, Community Services Director.
Uh, yes, Mayor and Council, uh, this is to dovetail, um, so that we can actually purchase the unit that you just approved. Um, we are sixty thousand dollars, sixty thousand five hundred dollars over budget. And with the approval of this budget amendment, um, we can issue a notice to proceed to Game Time this week.
Okay, thank you. Any, any public comment on that? All right, any council comment? Okay, do I have a motion, uh, to approve F? I'm sorry, a motion on F? I move to approve, okay. Motion, Mr. Anderson?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bolden? Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate you for what you do. Uh, move on to G, hold a discussion and give direction regarding the City of Nacogdoches Capital Improvements Projects Program. Finance Director, Curbo.
Could, could we take a?
Oh, sorry, yeah, let's pause. Okay, we'll resume our meeting. Uh, Ms. Curbo?
Council, Pam Curbo, Director of Finance. Tonight, we're going to go back over a couple of, um, the slides that y'all saw two weeks ago when we had our workshop on CIPs. And so basically, I'm just gonna go by fund, what we presented as proposed and what direction y'all gave us on those particular items in each fund. Um, in the general fund, we had proposed, um, a little over two point one million dollars in cash-funded items, um, consisting of land acquisition for a couple of, uh, potential fire stations in the future. Um, the downtown electrical service at the Festival Park, Lake Nacogdoches West Parkway, um, Park Access Walkway, um, our normal annual street rehab that we budget each year by ordinance, as well as some renovations for the fire stations that are not being addressed currently and the match for the airport grant. Um, one thing before I jump over to, to the other items in general fund, I wanted to, to bring your attention to on the, the Festival Park Electrical Service and the Lake Nacogdoches West, um, Park Access Walkway. Um, all of these items that we have proposed will be presented to you in the twenty-two, twenty-three budget cycle. But those two items, we would like to get, um, to start now on those, to start the design so that, um, when October one hits and the budget is approved, then we can actually get to work on, on the construction of these so that, um, the Festival Park Electrical Service can be up and running before the next festival season as well as the, the access walkway at the lake for next summer. And so those things, right now, we just need to go ahead and start those designs. So we would like to spend some of those monies now. Um, and everything else, like I said, we'll, we'll start with the October one budget year. Um, we had also proposed, um, a little less than twenty million dollars in items that would be for a proposed C, uh, CO bond issue, um, towards the end of August and September of this year. Those included a new central fire station, various parks, restrooms and playgrounds. Um, we had about five million dollars in, um, drainage improvements as well as five million dollars in street improvements. In the utility fund, we had discussed the eight million dollar ARPA funds and how we were going to, um, utilize those, six million in sewer and two million in water line repairs. Other items in the utility fund, we have proposed a little over eight million dollars in cash-funded items. A lot of these are our normal annual, um, cash-funded CIP items such as water line additions and replacements, developer agreements in both sewer and water. Um, we do an annual water well rehab each year of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, the two items that are not a normal annual recurring item would be the AMI system replacement of four point seven million and the belt press building at one point three. Um, just as a reminder, we have a little, right at fourteen million dollars worth of unallocated reserves in the utility fund. So this would, this would take eight of that fourteen. We would still be six million above our twenty-five percent reserve requirement in the utility fund. Um, we had also proposed a revenue bond issue in the next year to, um, address two of the tier one items that were not included in the cash-funded, which was five million dollars in major water line repairs and four and a half million in a transmission line replacement. Um, for our other funds, we had the Airport Construction Fund. We have one point five million for a one-way and taxi, um, work. That is, uh, funded with a tech stock grant, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be the match from the general fund that we, we spoke about on the first, um, slide. The Hotel Tax Fund, we have two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for design hill parking and exhibits. Uh, Street Maintenance Fund, that is the annual seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a five-year program of the Street Maintenance Fund, that is from the fees that are assessed. And the Sanitation Fund, three and a half million for our new sale and permit amendments. This again is funded with, uh, monies that we've been set us, setting aside for the last few years for these particular, particular items. So we do have, um, cash in the bank of around eight million dollars to fund that three and a half million. So with that, that's just a high overview of everything that we presented and what we discussed last time. And with that, I guess there were some questions, so we'll do our best to answer whatever we can.
Okay, anybody from the public wanna come in or have a question? Okay, council? Ms. Bellinger, I think you had some questions?
Um, yeah, I, I'm still concerned about the, um, the two creeks, the sewer lines. And I know those sewer lines, um, if, if you could speak to that, Mr. Bartlett. I, um, I know those sewer lines can, are breaking as we speak, right? And so if you would go over that a- again and tell us.
So the Lanana Creek and Bonita Creek are our two trunk sewer lines that collect everything in town effectively, or most everything in town. They're both concrete pipes and sections of them are deteriorating. So we've had some pretty catastrophic failures over the last few years. When those lines fail, they're fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand just for a point repair, uh, much less the problems we have with that, that large volume of sewer. Um, and in cases, it's been in the creek in some cases. So that's why it was a priority. Um, everything that you see that we presented here does not include those. So, uh, what we've got is five point five million or so in cash, I think Pam nodded her head, um, available. And we are going to begin the process of securing engineers, surveyors, environmental studies, which is the process. So we're gonna begin the process that we have to go through. That's probably the better part of three years, uh, two and a half years to three years to accomplish all that, including some land acquisition and easements. So what we wanna do is after the water study, the water rate study is come back to you with a little bit better sharpened pencil on the cost for all that and come back and say we've got a good design. We know what our easement costs have been and we wanna move forward with construction for this amount. And then we'll show you what the impacts of that are in a revenue bond world where we would generate that out of rates possibly. So, um, so the answer is, we're gonna start now. There's such a long lead time for design and environmental work. So we are gonna begin it. How we fund it is what we have to come back and discuss once we kind of find tuned it. Did, did that answer your questions?
Uh, sort of. So many of these things we're talking about are for five years. This one, we're only talking about funding for two years i- within this package, correct?
No, no, there's no funding in this package for this.
I know for the sewers, it's not for five years, but for other things that, we're not talking about five years for any of the other things or for roads. I mean, we do have several things that are for roads and, correct? Am I wrong about that?
So I'm not sure I understand you, but let me see if this works. So on, on our street maintenance fee, that's a five-year program because that is tied to a street maintenance, um, fee that we charge and we generate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. And so we allocate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year for that. So that is a known revenue source for those five years and a known expense for those five years. Um, in, in this instance, the five million dollars that he's speaking of is in a prior budget. So it, it's already allocated, it's in the current budget, there was monies last year that rolled over to this year. So there's nothing in the, the, this presentation for new monies for, for Lanana or Bonita. Because that five, that five million will get us for the work for the next two to three years. At that point, everything that we've presented here is all. At that point, everything that we've presented here is all tier-one items, with the exception of those two sewer lines. Understanding that the five million that we have, we're gonna spend for the first two to three years. And then at that point, the additional twenty to twenty-five million that will be needed, that is what we will be assessing through the utility rate study, how to fund that. Whether that is a revenue bond, more than likely, because that, there's, there's physically no way to save twenty million dollars in the next three years, if that makes sense.
Let me ask my question a little differently. Are there other things, other than this twenty-six million dollars, that we will be looking at as far as capital improvements over the next five years?
Yes, okay, so at the, the last meeting, the, this spreadsheet that had our tiers? So the black stuff is tier-one, it's, it's included here. The tier-two and tier-three are red. Those are items that are on the board, per se, to be done, but there's no funding source currently for those. And so if we're going to do the red items, we have to find a revenue source to fund them, whether that be rates, bonds, taxes, whatever that happens to be.
So this is the only tier-one, the only tier-one.
Tier-one that is not addressed in this.
Included that, and it would be for the next five years. That concerns me, I would like to see that, I mean, if we're talking about bonds and any kind of revenue or the CO bonds or whatever, I'd like to, you know, have a clear picture of what we're talking about as far as tier-one for the next five years.
The only item, tier-one for the next five years that's not addressed tonight is Lanana and Bonita. That's the only tier-one item currently that is not addressed. And so it, there, there's, there's no funding mechanism right now, we don't have enough cash, and we cannot issue bonds for it under the current rate structure. And so that's what he was saying, we've got to have that utility rate study done, understanding that in this next five years, we know we're going to have twenty to twenty-five million dollars for those two tier-one products, items. At least that has to be addressed. And so that's why it's not proposed to you tonight, because we don't have any way to fund it currently. We've gotta do some more research in, in the study to find out how we're going to fund the, the big twenty to twenty-five million portion of that three years from now. Does that answer that?
Yeah, I, I got that. But I guess what I'm saying is, I'd, I'd really like to have a proposal, not us telling you what we wanna do or how we wanna do it. I wanna know what the impact is. What is your proposal, maybe even two or three proposals of, you know, what mix of bonds, what mix of taxes, what rate increases, what fees? What, what package, one or two or three packages will get this done? But I also think we need to include, maybe even in year two, we'll have to do, you know, another revenue bond. So I want the whole picture for five years.
So, so for the very first workshop, what we brought to you is what we can do under our existing rates, under our existing property tax rate, without any increases, okay? So that was our fir-, this is our first package. We will have additional things as tier-two and tier-threes, as we start looking at those. We're gonna be bringing those back to you with, this is the package we can do with a two-cent property tax increase. This is what we can do with a, you know, I'm not sure, we'll have to have the rate study first, to fund these items with a utility rate. And so what we brought to you tonight and two weeks ago is just the items that we can fund with current cash reserves, current bonding capacity under our existing rates and under our existing tax rate. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but I, but I'm, I'm not saying we, we can borrow like-for-like or whatever. I'd just like to see the whole package, not knowing, I mean, to me, it's sort of like, I already have a, a car note. I'm about to pay off my car note. I just want, uh, uh, that doesn't mean that I have that money. I'm still borrowing money if I have, if I decide to pick up a three hundred, you know, or three thousand dollar a month note or whatever. And I'd like to see what impact that has, you know, on.
Perfectly understood. And on the utility fund side, that is going to be what we will do as we work through the utility rate study. On the general fund side, we can go back today and take the two, tier-two and tier-threes and come to you and say, if you want to do all tier-twos, it's going to be a two-cent property tax increase. Or if you wanna do this, this package, it's a five-cent property tax increase. We can bring those to you. This was just our first workshop on what we can do under the current rate structure. But we can come back and, and do that as well, just with some, some examples of what we can do for each, each, I think it was two point five to two point eight million for every penny on the property tax rate. So you could, theoretically, on the general fund stuff, look at the red and say, I wanna raise property taxes one penny, then pick out two and a half million dollars worth of projects. So, you see what I'm saying?
I, I do.
Yeah.
But I'm, I'm more concerned about, I think we had drainage that had no revenue source.
Right, and see, that's, that's a part of that, that utility rate study is, is looking at that drainage fee to support the, the rates.
So before we make decisions, that, that's more, I'm really concerned about is the utilities, the, the drainage, the sewers, and any water. And I'd like to, to know that for the next five years.
So just to make sure, are you wanting us just to wait until all that's done? So wait till a year from now to do all that?
No. No, we can project a little bit of, of that.
I don't know if we can with rates, because again, it's all contingent on what needs to be, what needs to be built. All these rate studies, what they do is they based on your debt coverages, what you need for operations, what you need for future capital improvements. And so, I mean, we, we just don't have the means to do that. We have to hire those consultants to help us get through that process. And so it, it's gonna take several months to get there. So if the request is that not spend anything on these, on these tier-one items, that's fine. It's just, it's gonna, it's gonna delay another year plus for us to do that.
I'm asking for a, a guess, even a, an approximation of what, of how this is gonna impact people. Are we gonna, you know, are we talking about fees? What kind of fees are we talking about? I know it, you're not gonna get a, you, you, do you understand, Mr. Bartlett? Would you like to help me out here?
Let me reframe just a little bit. So what we've shown you is tier-one, for example, in my part of the world, utilities and streets, has been framed by reasonableness. So quite honestly, I have fifty million dollars worth of targeted water line work. We cannot achieve all that at once, and we know that. So we've tried to pare that down, prioritize it, that's got a little fuzzy gray area to do. Same thing happens with sewer, same thing happens with streets. So we could spend significantly more money, but we know coming to you with numbers like that, there's no feasible answer that we can go through with rates. So we've come through with what we thought were reasonable chunks. And so we literally almost back into your answer. So the answer is, can we stand a zero tax increase? Then this is what we get, what you've seen. If we can stand a two-cent tax increase, then we can add these kind of projects. So it's almost, what can you stand to fund? And then we will use it in the most priority way that, that we both agree on and both come up with. But we can't, to give you the numbers to do everything would be insurmountable.
No, no, I'm not, I'm tier-one. That's all I'm asking about is tier-one.
What, you're, you're accomplishing all of tier-one with except for, except for Lanana and Bonita Creek. You're accomplishing all of tier-one for no change in rates and no change in tax. That, that's presentation one, yes, ma'am. So if you wanna start doing the items in red on, on these sheets, then that is our tier-two. And we're gonna have to talk about how to fund it, so.
And will there be fees? Are we talking about no change in fees also?
No, tier, tier-two is going to require.
No, but just with tier-one?
Tier-one, no.
Correct.
No additional fees, no?
Nothing on the water bill, nothing on the taxes. But like I say, we've pared it to fit that, you know? So what we're telling you is tier-one, there's still many other important projects. Please don't misunderstand that.
Now, what we can do with our current rate structure for utility fund, we can work with our, we can, hi. We can. You make a better door than a window, Mr. Bartlett. You know, what we can do though, even with our current rate structure, I'm not proposing that we would do this, but we could theoretically with, if we needed to fund Lanana and Bonita, like tomorrow, set aside, we've already engineered it, we've already required the, acquired the right-of-way acquisition, all those components, but we needed to construct it tomorrow, there would be probably a massive rate increase. We could probably back into that and with our existing rate structure potentially. But that's not what we were proposing. We're proposing to do everything as Mr. Bartlett said, with the exception of those two large projects. And that's why we wanna study it further to see how, what options we have. There may be some debt rolling off, there may be some other components that, just how the rate, rate structure is, is structured, it just needs to be completely reviewed.
I, I will tell you one thing that we can do that is, is pretty easily done this week is I can tell you, let's just say twenty-five million is what we need in year three to finish Lanana and Bonita. And so we're going to assume we're going to do a revenue bond in year three for those two items. I can tell you what the annual debt service is going to be on that. And that is how much our rates have to go up. Now, I can't tell you the effect of, of your water bill because each, we have, of course, residential, industrial, commercial, we have different rate classes that have to be looked at. And even within each rate class, we have four or five tiers, depending on usage. And so it's not like saying, I need a million dollars a year divided by thirteen thousand customers, that's how much your water bill's going up. Unfortunately, it's, it's way more complicated than that. But I can tell you how much that debt service would be on a twenty-five million dollar bond so that you would know, right now, we're, we're generating about nineteen million dollars a year in water and sewer revenue. And if we need another million or whatever, that would give you an idea of kind of very broad idea of what it would impact. Every, every category will be a different percentage, but we can get you that.
I think that could be helpful. I mean, 'cause I, I really do wanna know where we are.
That, that's not a problem. We can, we can get the financial advisors to run a, a scenario where they do a bond issuance in, for the twenty-five million and, and we go from there.
Let me, let me ask, I know this is tier-one or I'm not sure. But if we do all of these repairs, will we still have water bubbling up out of our sewers? We still will.
Just less.
Just less, okay. And we'll still have major drainage issues? Just less, hopefully, or the same? I know.
Council member, I, I hope we're attacking some of our worst areas, and that's, that's the best way I can answer for you. Are we still gonna have water lines that break? There's not a day goes by that we don't have a water, and that's not even being facetious. So yes, we will still have some. There are a lot of unknowns we encounter every day, find storm drains. Last week revealed several dozen calls to my phone, as you can imagine, from drainage issues. So they, they continue to grow, continue to happen. Very simply put, we have deferred maintenance on all this. And I know you've heard me say that. And all we're trying to do is catch up as close as we can to that with what's affordable and reasonable. The drainage fee is what we proposed to be part of this water rate study. Doesn't sound like it's water rate, but it's something we want to at least approach you with a possible solution to consider. You may not wanna do that, but we wanna give you ammunition of what that would also generate.
Okay, so that drainage fee then would come into effect when, if we did that?
So that would be what you determine, let me answer it that way. But right now, we have previously paid for drainage out of sewer fund, basically out of utility funds. And we'd like to correct that to general fund, which is where we think it should be. And that strains the general fund beyond what it has been strained. So this would be, this would start to generate, I mean, we generate three-quarters of a million dollars in round numbers with the five-dollar fee you see for residents right now on the water bill. So that gives you some perspective. I have asked for, hey, let's try to spend a million a year on drainage improvements. So that's where you see times five for a five-year CIP, five million dollars is where that comes from. And that will continue, you'll see us continue to add a million and add a million. So it's not just for five years, it's what we think we need as a reoccurring expense. But our five years is just our CIP horizon that we look at.
So when would that drainage fee begin? If, when would we, I mean, when?
So this package that Pam has shown you has the COs, initial COs with four million?
The four million for the critical and then one million, year-one of the, of the annual.
So we would have five million dollars to go spend on drainage. We have about a dozen projects that are designed or virtually designed now. So I've got several million just literally almost rolled up on the shelf, and we're continuing that work. So we would go do this study, we would go to construction if we do this plan. And we would be doing several million dollars of drainage improvements right now, absolutely right now. By the time we get that constructed, we'll have some plans to, I mean, well before it gets constructed, we'll have proposals to you to look at on how to perpetually fund some level of storm drainage improvement over time. And we're just picked a million dollars as our target because we've been spending three-quarters to a million a year repairing storm drains. And that was just repairing the worst ones.
So just to clarify, do you anticipate that this drainage fee would begin in June, in December, the following year, the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand, what are we talking about?
And that may be hard to answer, but we're, it's gonna take a number of months for the study to happen. So we'll come back to you later this year, is that reasonable enough, Pam? Later this year and say, here's what we're gonna look at for rate options. One of those rate options is this drainage fee. And it generates this, and by the way, there may be more than one option for the drainage fee. And show you what that will, will give us. And then we'll say, if we implement it now, we start to accrue money. If we don't implement it for two years and we phase this in, our last water rates was, was a five-year phasing. And so we may have a plan like that because if you do the COs, then we've got a batch of money to go spend on storm drainage today. And we can't, there's not enough construction and materials and contractors and people to do a bazillion dollars at once in, in our community. So, so we've got a good head start, we'll come to you, and then we can implement this at the timing where we'll be ready for the next projects, which, you know, those, ready for the next drainage projects would certainly be a year, year and a half away. So yeah, it'll be sometime in twenty-three.
So we're talking about the fall, looking at possibly a drainage fee and maybe?
Alternatives, yes.
And, and maybe utility?
Yes.
Rate adjustment, all that would be in the fall and possibly then go into effect in twenty twenty-three.
And part of what you would look at is an implementation schedule.
Right, right, I'm just trying to get.
Correct.
You all know this better than I do, I'm trying to.
Right, but I think that's correct. Later this year, here's a plethora of options in utilities and drainage. And we'll, a lot of discussion will go on, and then we can talk about how to implement that, depending on what those numbers are.
So we're talking about a drainage fee, probably, possibly, whenever, a utility rate increase and any other fees that we're, we're basically talking about those two things, is that correct? After the study and after?
The study is going to address that, um, the impact fees.
Yeah, yeah, we'll also look at impact fees.
Solid waste and impact fees as well.
Yes.
Two different fees?
But we'll be bringing, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do that in, in pieces, and so y'all can choose.
I, I'd like to see the whole thing at once, I mean, some.
Well, it's gonna be a part of a package. Okay. We're just, we're pricing it out on the RFP individually, just in, just so that you have the option if you want to include all or none or part or whatever.
It's, it's just, I, I like the big picture. I mean, I just have to see a, a bigger picture to know where we're going, so I appreciate.
No, and I think that's what we'll bring to you later this year, and most likely with alternatives, invite, involved in.
I think I've asked enough questions.
Okay, Mr. Bolden?
I just have one question and maybe a second part of that. The tier-ones, we have the funding source for it, correct?
Currently, the, what is proposed tonight, with the exception of, of the two sewer lines, everything tier-one is going to be either with, with, funded with cash reserves or with the CO or revenue bond issuance that we've proposed, under the current rate structure.
And the banana and Lanana?
I'm so proud, that, that's what I call it all the time, they laugh at me always. You didn't do that on purpose?
No, I did not.
It's so easy to do.
But Lanana and Bonita, is we are looking for a funding source for that, correct?
Yeah, the, the sheer magnitude of that expense is going to require a bond issuance because we do not have the cash reserves and cannot build twenty to twenty-five million dollars in cash reserves within a three-year period. And so that is, that is one of the items that, yes, we'll have to look at, at financing that significant of a cost, yes.
And is that financed, over a period of time, we do maybe part of it, first year, part second or third, if we just gonna do it one at, once?
Well, we, we could potentially, I guess, do two separate issues if we're gonna try to do one, one sewer line and the, the other. I think that becomes a, a conversation about phasing it or, you know, if there's any economies of scale, doing it together. But yeah, that, that will be all, that we'll, we'll bring to you when we get to that point of, of how we want to, to proceed with that, that issuance.
Thank you, thank you, Mika.
You bet.
Let me see if I can phrase this correctly. At our April sixth workshop, I found really, really helpful your explanation regarding why certain. why certain projects were chosen, um, based not just on tier one, tier two status, but, but based on, um, timelines and allowable funding sources and, um, sort of the, the division between general fund, what, what's allowed to be spent out of the general fund versus the utility fund. Um, and I think it went a long way, um, toward addressing maybe community concerns of like, looking at this, a, a, at this proposal and saying, well, you're spending one million five on that, why don't you spend it on this? Because that really needs it more. And your, your explanation was super rational, and I understood it, so I feel like if I understood it.
Maybe you ought to play that back. Can we just put that on the TV?
Um, a, and so I was, I was just hoping that you could, if you remember how you explained it, um, summarize that just for the benefit of people who weren't there.
Well, I, I really do not recall that. That was two hours of lots of talking, but, um, so, um, you know, the, the first part of that is, is we do have, we do have various funding sources and, and we are kind of, um, I don't want to say trapped, but we are trapped with what we can spend monies from, from various, um, places. And so, um, with, with what we looked at, of course, we have, you know, a hundred million dollars per se of, of utility stuff that we need to spend, but we, we also understand that our property taxes are the only way that we can fund our general fund stuff, our parks, our recreations, our fire, um, facilities. And so, um, you know, at the end of the day, it's, it's a multitude of buckets. And so we looked at all the tier ones in each of the, the categories and said, you know, this is, this is what we can do, like on, on general fund, the, the property tax side. Um, under the existing property tax rate that we currently have without any increase, we knew that we could issue another twenty million dollars. Um, and so then we looked at items that we can fund with a property tax increase, what can we do? And then, of course, on utility fund side, we knew we had eight million dollars of ARPA money. Now, we could use some of that for general fund. We could have, understanding that we had more money, um, necess-, needed in the utility funds. This is how we proposed that we utilize those monies upfront in the utility fund, because right now, we don't have a, a mechanism to fund in utility fund without raising rates.
Right.
Except for what cash we have available. And so utilizing those ARPA funds for the utility made sense to us because it did not impact user fees. And so, um, and, and at the same time, had we used that in general fund and not done some of these projects, and at some point, we have to do them, and then it raises the property tax rate. We were trying to look and say, this is what we can do under our existing property tax rate. Utilizing that eight million dollars of ARPA in utility helped us do a lot more projects in the utility fund than we would have been able to without that. Um, I have no idea what else I said, but that's, that's kind of the gist, is, you know, each, each of our functional areas has to work within themselves, kind of like they're their own business. And so, um, you know, it, it would be nice if we could say, you know, if we wanted to fund all of our utilities, but then nothing in general fund gets funded, nothing in the hotel fund gets funded. And that, and so at the end of the day, it's, it's kind of utilizing our funds that we have available within each of our businesses to the best that we can.
Right, and then, I mean, also, there are restrictions. I mean, taking away what you mentioned about the ARPA money and that being able to use that money for both general fund projects and utilities projects. There are, um, restrictions on what monies can we, can be spent on what projects. And that was taken into consideration in this proposal.
Right, right. Yeah, you don't, you don't want to charge someone, you know, an exorbitant san- sanitation rate to fund the parks. And so there, there's a reason that the sanitation fund is set up, those, those fees are set up to run the sanitation department. Um, and so, yes, you have to keep that in mind, that you, you, you do have to realize the source of those funds to realize the utilization of those funds as well.
So then like concretely speaking, for example, going back to Benita and Lanana, um, uh, those would be projects that would have to be under the utility side, and, and you can't pull money from.
We, we, we can, you, you can fund with a property tax increase.
Mm-hmm.
Um, those, those items. We, you can do a, an issuance that is property tax supported. We have historically done revenue-supported, um, but you can, if, if you want to utilize a piece of your, of your property tax for that, um, you can. It's just, um, historically, we have tried to keep utility fund responsible for utility fund expenditures, if there's revenues and those expenditures in the same fund. There, there's a mechanism to, to make that work.
But also historically, the general fund's been taking money from the utility.
Yes, the, the transfers right now, the transfer. It's basically, yeah.
Doesn't make sense. Okay, all right.
That makes sense?
Yep, thank you.
Ms. Anderson? Um, no particular questions other than I guess for, uh, Mr. Bartlett. Um, the, on the, the sewer projects, you foresee the, the planning and engineering process taking up to about three years?
Correct.
Okay, and so that gives us at least that cushion of time to find that funding source.
Correct, and, and even.
Confirming.
And even, Mr. Anderson, to accrue additional funds.
Mm-hmm.
For example, if we have a dry summer, which is kind of what we're looking like, we may pick up some significant cash funds from water sales this summer. So some of that may be different alternatives we bring to you later. There may be a change in our cash position.
Yeah, yeah, but, but we've got time to go through the rate study and look at how.
And a significant part of that delay is not just engineering and environmental. We've got easement acquisition, which is a process that's always subject to condemnation. So we try very hard not to be that way. Uh, but if we run down to where we can't get an easement, then we go, go through that process, and that could be appealed and and that, that adds to the timeframe if we have to go through a condemnation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you very much. Um, and, and thank you for, um, distilling, both of you for distilling a very complex, um, process into, uh, something understandable.
Okay, well, we will move on to.
Let, let me just make sure I unders-, sorry, one more. So, um, we're anticipating this, um, this, um, revenue bond, probably not twenty twenty-three, but twenty twenty-four. And again, it's if we want to start saving it, right?
For, for Lanana, Benita?
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be at least, what, three years probably? Two to three years.
Okay, so then n- next year would only be impact fees, drainage fees, and utility increases, correct?
Utility sanitation and, yeah, utility, well, we, we water and sewer both. And sanitation is what we'll look at.
So those three, so. That'll be a, a pill to swallow, and then, and then not the year after, and then, right, okay. Uh, anything you can do to help us get a clear picture of what we're facing, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, well, that will move to executive session, uh, uh, Persuance Texas Government Code, section five fifty-one point zero seven four. Uh, we will go into executive session at seven fifty-nine on April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. I guess we do need it, yeah. At eight twelve on April the nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. We are, uh, Persuance Texas Government Code, section, uh, five fifty-one point oh seven four. We are returning from executive session at eight thirteen on April the nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I move to, um, um, extend, uh, the contract for, um, an additional year, making it two years.
Okay. Bert, any other discussion? Okay. Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. Is there another motion?
I will move that we, um, grant Mr. Kirkland an additional two weeks of vacation accrual um, during that one-year, um, extended contract.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? All right, return.